Good evening, my name is Charity Johnson and I am a senior to Overston High School. In the duration of tonight's board meeting, the members will discuss the upcoming charter school renewals and fire alarm upgrades. Additionally, parents, to ensure that your students are safe and protected, there will be security improvements throughout the entire district. Also, due to the recent inclement weather, several schools will have their heating systems upgraded really soon. And last but not least, congratulations to the board for receiving a grant for the Stop School Vines Prevention and Mental Health Training Program. This concludes what I have for you this evening. Thank you for watching, have a great night.
Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Welcome to the Shelby County Board of Education's December 4th, 2018 Board Business Meeting. Ms. Anthony, please call the roll.
Board Member McKissick?
Present.
Board Member Orgel? Board Member Woods? Board Member Love? Board Member McCormick?
Present.
Board Member Jones? Board Member Bibbs?
Present.
Board Member Coleman?
Present.
Chair Avant?
Present.
You have seven board members present.
We have a quorum. Pledge of, um, okay. I'm sorry, I don't have the information on the color guard, but we want to, we want to go ahead and stand for the pledge allegiance. Thank you so much for coming out tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in whose liberty and justice are our.
Please remain standing. We want to make sure to take, to keep in our thoughts and prayers the families impacted by the bus accident this weekend. We want to make sure to, uh, to thank, to remember Cameron Johnson, the student who was killed in the accident as we pray for his family. You may be seated. I do want to take a moment and acknowledge the color guard even though they've left. Um, they're from Craigmont High School, Sergeant Lee, Corporal Richmond, Corporal Blades, and First Sergeant Payne. In keeping with SES's acknowledgement of the arts of education, being a vital part of college career and life readiness, tonight's spotlight on the arts will feature the visual arts. We would like to recognize the student winners of the annual SES Holiday Card Design Contest. Images of winning works are shown on the screens. As students, um, please come to the front as your names are called to receive your prizes. Honorable mention, which is $25 in prizes, goes to Cedric Harris, 11th grade, Bolton High School. Our teacher is Nicole McLan- McLannan. Creza Olvida, 12th grade, Germantown High School. Our teacher is Teresa Phipps. Rachel Wilks, 12th grade, White Station High School. Our teacher, Charles Berlin. Lingui Lee, 9th grade, White Station High School. Our teacher, Charles Berlin. And Ganga Pradeep, 12th grade, White Station High School. Our teacher, Charlo- Charles Berlin. Come stand forward, we're going to call some other names. What's your name? Rachel, thank you Rachel. Um, then we'll have acknowledgement of the world language holiday cards, $50 in prizes. Nora Heckers, 5th grade, Grahamwood Elementary, uh, School. Our teacher, Livia Carboni. Um, fine arts holiday prizes and $50. Alex Robilia, 2nd grade, South Park Elementary. Our teacher, Melissa Crown Morris. Curriculum and Instruction Holiday Cards, $50 in prizes. Mackenzie Ruffin, 7th grade, Germantown Middle School. Our teacher, Shannon Mora. Operation Warm Hearts Holiday Cards, prizes of $75. And that is Maddie Ellis, 10th grade, Overton High School. Our teacher, Molly Brown. Raven Payne, 11th grade, Germantown High School. Our teacher, Ashley Gerst. Marcus DeGaulle, kindergarten, South Park Elementary. Our teacher, Melissa Crown Morris. And then, Anais Luna, 10th grade, White Station High School. Our teacher, Charles Berlin. To all the students and teachers honored tonight, congratulations. Let's give them a round of applause. Now, we, um, our special recognition tonight will be held later in the meeting. Our normal special recognitions will resume in January. The question is now on the approval of the agenda. Are there any amendments?
Thank you, Madam Chair, we want to add an item, uh, related to Out of B Wells.
And, um, I'd also like to add an item, which would be the discussion of the interim superintendent. Ms. Love?
For our resolution approving SES Board Member Strategic School Funds, I would like to remove Hawkins Mill School, Georgian Hills Middle School, and North Haven Elementary School.
Are there any other amendments to the agenda? Thank you Chair. Um, when, I don't have it in front of me, the number, what number it is on here, give me just a second. 13.1, when we are doing item number 13.1, making sure that we split the question. Divide the question? Yes, when it comes up. When it comes up, okay. Thank you. Ms. Jones, are there any other amendments?
I have an item that will be brought forth, uh, from the Procurement Committee meeting concerning, uh, the short-term, long-term disability from last week, but according to Dr. Schultz's, uh, procedure, it has to be done during the committee report.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good place to do it. You can put it down the agenda if you want, but committee reports are convenient for us.
Right. So, I mean, if we can put it on the agenda now by consent, we can go ahead and add it now, and, uh, if there's, I don't know if it's appropriate, if there's no discussion, we can go ahead and add it to the consent agenda?
If there's no objections?
Okay.
Seeing no objections, okay, well, um, with no other further amendments to the agenda, roll call vote.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have seven votes in the firmament.
That item, uh, the agenda is approved. So we'll now move on to the public comments. Tennessee law makes no specific provisions for the participation of the public at meetings of local boards of education. However, board policy provides that not more than 30 minutes of each regular business and special call meeting shall be devoted to public comment. Speakers must state their name, home address, organization he or she is representing if any, and subject of the presentation before they are permitted to proceed. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs that concern them. Speakers are asked to refrain from using names of personnel or names of persons connected with the school system, particularly when lodging a complaint. Speakers will not be permitted to engage in gossip, make defamatory comments, or use abusive or vulgar language. The chairman shall have the authority to terminate the remarks of any individual who's disruptive or does not adhere to board rules. The timer projected on the screen to your right and directly behind the board will turn yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining. When you hear two bells, your time has expired. We have 19 speakers tonight, so each speaker will have one and a half minutes. I'm going to call the first three names, Timothy Green, Brittany Thornton, and Deirdre Brooks.
Good afternoon. Dear Shelby County School Board Members and Superintendent, my name is Timothy Green. My address is 241 Hillview Avenue, Memphis, Tennessee, 38109. I am here on behalf of the Memphis Restorative Justice Coalition. The coalition is comprised of the Memphis Urban League, Memphis Urban League Young Professionals, the Dividend and Profound Gentlemen. The MRJC was established through the Memphis Educational Equity Coalition led by Conexión es América. We would like to partner with both SES Board and SES Students Equity Enrollment and Discipline Office to decrease the high volume of suspensions in SES through the introduction of restorative justice practices. During the 2017-18 academic school year, 14,669 students were suspended, and 12,926 of those students were African-American. To put this in perspective, almost nine out of every 10 students suspended in Shelby County is African-American. Parents, students, teachers, principals, all community stakeholders are frustrated and are ready to see a positive change with school disciplinary policies in SES. There are some pioneer schools in the district that are already implementing restorative justice practices. Black Lives Matter and the Dividend support restorative justice practices in both district managed and charter schools. In an effort to decrease the occurrences of suspensions and increase access to instructional time, we recommend the following. Implement restorative justice and implicit bias training for all school leadership and personnel with this, with a suspension reduction program, using restorative justice practices as an alternative to suspension. Partner with MRJC to establish a restorative justice task force comprised of board members, the SESC team, and co- community members to help decrease district-wide suspension rates through restorative justice practices. Thank you for your support to create healthy learning environments for our children, focusing on nurturing and the development of the whole child through restorative justice practices. Thank you.
Ms. Thornton?
Greetings, esteemed Shelby County School Board Members and Superintendent. My name is Brittany Thornton, founder of Juice Orange Mound, a progressive nonprofit created to mobilize our marginalized youth and disengaged millennials to evoke change in the oldest African-American community, Orange Mound. My address is 1521 Sella, Memphis, Tennessee, 38114. I'm here today in solidarity with the Black Millennials for Flint, the first African-American and Latino environmental justice and civil rights organization advocating for the eradication of lead in U.S. history. I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak with you this evening to inquire about the progress of the bill SB 0619. As enacted, this bill requires each local board of education in the state of Tennessee to develop a policy to implement a program to reduce the potential sources of lead contamination in drinking water in public schools. Lead is particularly dangerous for children under the age of six, but also a health risk for all children despite of their age. No level of lead is safe for children or adults. Lead poisoning can lead to a variety of health problems in children, ranging from speech and language problems to developmental delays. As a native Memphian, I take pride in knowing that Memphis has access to pure, to a pure water aquifer. However, antiquated service lines and dilapidated infrastructure compromise the integrity of this pure water source. MOGNW estimates around 30,000 lead water lines remain in Memphis, largely in the older areas of the city, including my neighborhood of Orange Mound. We are so grateful that Memphis's own Lee Harris introduced this bill to create a lead-free environment for our children. Um, I will, for the sake of time, leave some supplemental materials with our specific asks from the board. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent Hobson. My name is Deirdre Brooks, I'm at 1306 Carr, 38104. I am here, um, to share knowledge that we have gotten from parent voices concerning state testing. Um, things that we hear most from parents that we serve is that they want to know how their children are doing. We need a test, uh, without the stress. It's true T and Ready has some issues, but we cannot know the quality of a school without measuring the students' learning. If parents, educators, school leaders, and district leaders don't want T and Ready, we must have an alternate to be recommended. This is too important to mess up, and we can't play political games with our children when their lives are on the line. So that we ask that if you do ask this of the state, that you come prepared and ready with an alternative that would give parents an equitable and a correct transparent look at how their children are doing and how schools are doing in Shelby County. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call the next three speakers, Ramon, I'm sorry, Carmen Winters, Charles Everett, and Hope Sharp.
Good evening, my name is Carmen Winters, my address is 3297 Piedmont Cove, Memphis, Tennessee, 38115. Good evening Superintendent Hobson and Shelby County School Board Members. It gives me great pleasure to stand before you as a student of the City University School of Liberal Arts. I've been a student at City from 8th grade to present as an 11th grader. My experience at City University has made my academic growth preparing me for college and career readiness for my graduation year of 2020, and a trem- and a tremendous effort and great work from our Chancellor Robinson and President Ash, teachers and staff. We are here as a voice to share this important work that we have done and can, and can, and continue to do with us as scholars. We would like for our City University boys to be given the same opportunity as the City University Liberal Arts for a constructually renewal with Shelby County Schools. As I was sitting down reviewing the metric scores which has changed, I was concerned as a student. In the midst of the process, we were informed by the SES Charter School Office that the metrics have been changed and the school will no longer receive an overall average of three, three core components. I found the news disappointing, especially considering a change to the measurement tool that was outlined within the process. We believe as students of City University Charter School of Liberal Arts, that the opportunity will ensure the fairness and transparency of such a high-stakes process, not only for City University's school board preparatory, but for all SES charter schools. I believe that all our schools will continue to show academic growth. That goal can only be accomplished by, by your support and our schools and your assistance in this effort to support the continued education for our male scholars in grades 6 through 8. Thank you for your ongoing support and for, and our scholars and City University Schools. Thank you.
Board Chair Avant, Commissioners and Superintendent, my name is Charles Everett, 1084 Craigwood Drive, Memphis, 38116.
Mr. Everett, can you move the microphone up just a little bit? Thank you.
And for the 21st consecutive board meeting, I'm honored to, uh, be able to address the board on behalf of United Shelby County Council, PTA. Uh, you all have received, uh, folders that should be in front of you that will give you a recap of our, uh, November report and activities since our last meeting in October. Uh, we'd like to express our sympathies and, and prayers to the students and families that were involved or impacted by the accident in Arkansas, um, on yesterday. We also want to share our thanks and show our appreciation to, uh, Superintendent Hobson for his time here at SES and, uh, his belief in family and community engagement. Uh, we wish you all, uh, the best and the best for your family as well. Also, as of today, uh, the United Shelby County Council, PTA, has 2,270 PTA members, which is 20% more than we had at this time last year. In your folders, you'll find that the, uh, Commercial Appeal published a news article about the work of the council on, uh, November the 4th. On Thursday, we will have our, uh, Council Reflections Program here in, in the auditorium on this, on the 6th at 6:00 PM. Uh, we are inviting all of the, the board members and the superintendent, uh, to attend. Uh, thank you for your time.
Ms. Sharp?
Good evening. I'm here speaking on behalf of City University, T-Boys. I have a son that goes there, and his academic has really improved since he's been there. I'm a parent that really check behind because once he got, before he came to the school, he, he was low in his grades, and since he's been over there, he's really been developing not just academically, but in his conduct as well. And I'm a parent that discipline, and I appreciate that being a school that's like a parent that not, don't, don't quickly send your child home on suspension, but we'll discipline them and send them back to their room to be better people. And he, uh, I check his grades as he go online because I don't want the school to give my child a grade. I want them to earn, and I see that he's earning his grades. So I know that they are doing what they're supposed to do over there. I also have a daughter over there, and I planted on my son to continue to go there. He's in 6th grade, and now they're talking about closing the school. I really wish that they would have the opportunity to continue to grow because, uh, speaking out of my home, it has helped and it's growing. It's, it's growing, and I see the process, and I see, and I not only see it, but I feel they also helping parents. They got, uh, after school things that children can attend for working parents, so they helping parents and children. So I just wish you all just take that into consideration.
I'm going to call the next three speakers. I'm sorry, but I can't really understand the last name. It's either Frances Sutton or Frances Lou Ellen, um, Patricia Allen, and then Elijah Sledge.
Uh, I'm sorry, is it Frances Anderson?
Okay.
Okay, I wrote really bad. Thank you so much, and good evening to all of you, uh, to Superintendent Hobson, all of the board members. Thank you for allowing me to come before you. Uh, I am a real estate agent with, um, uh, the Memphis Area Association of Realtors. We have about 3,800 members, we're very strong, we're very strong supporters of City University. We love White Haven, we love City University, we love our schools. We mentor people at that school, the kids at that school. We give back, we provide donations, coats, food, to the food bank. We try to help in our community, we try to help with housing, we know that that helps with a lot of crimes in the area. We try to help with blight, and to close a school that's doing so wonderful in this neighborhood, to have concerned parents, concerned teachers, and concerned people that are over that school, it would just be a sin and a shame to close the school. I ask you to please reconsider not close the City University for Boys because it's making proud leaders in this city that could probably one day come up and sit in the place where you, you're sitting. So I would appreciate if you all would reconsider that, not close the school, help the kids that are trying to help themselves, help the parents, and please make sure that you keep that in mind. I support City University.
Ms. Allen?
Good evening to the board and everyone in the room. My name is Patricia Allen. I live at 561 Hewlett Road in Memphis. My zip code is 38109. The nearest school that we support is Fairleigh High School. I've come here tonight, my concern is, is not enough graduates that are prepared to go get a job. Sure, there are some, but look at the ones that fell between the cracks. Those are the ones I'm here to talk to you about. Now, Fairleigh has been under the Achievement School District for about three years. My suggestion is take Fairleigh back from ASD. I know they're doing good. Take Fairleigh back, take that vacant land, build a school similar to what they made in Collierville. Let's assess what we need, get our young people together. We know everybody won't go to college and everyone that goes won't stay. We know everybody that takes a technical course probably won't finish it. Then we got those, no matter what you say to them, head as hard as a brick and you still can't get through to them. I'm telling you what I'm talking about because I got them, I had them at my house. Okay, so, my, uh, suggestion is, you know, I'm just being honest about it. If I can't be honest, what can I be? We've got this, take in consideration what will work, and let's get these courses in this community college and high school, something that will actually work. You know, some, they just want to be a drug dealer, but that don't mean they got to take a drug dealing course. Take something that sells, let's teach them how to do this. We know we don't get, the teachers know they don't get to everybody. You can talk to them five million times, but let's get something that will help them. Now, my time is up, good night.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Uh, good evening, board. My name is Elijah Sledge, I reside at 2871 Vista View, uh, zip code 38127. And I would like to open, uh, with a question for you all. Can you judge a fish by his ability to climb a tree? So, uh, other words, environment matters. And after looking at the, uh, state test report card today, my heart was kind of heavy, but it also reminded me why we fight so hard for quality education to be in every single school in our communities. Uh, we also have a class of opportunity youth that sits among the highest in the nation with roughly 27,000 youth between the ages of 15 and 24 that are not in school and not working. Uh, I feel like this is a result from a school system that doesn't have many options, uh, a school that kills creativity, individuality, and a school that is intellectually abusive should not sit in our communities. Um, a school should teach its child creatively, uh, also innovatively, and teach the child to think critically, independently, and able to connect all these things. A doctor does not give his patient the same, all his patients the same medication, so therefore no two brains are the same. So like I said, children, children must be taught innovatively, how to think critically, independently, and also, uh, the and also the ability to connect it all. Traditional schools seem like they cram and force-feed information to our children for tests and assessments. In other words, memorize these dots so you can place them. True education should teach us how to connect those dots. Education must be involved. Thank you.
I'd like to call the next three speakers. Tequila Rucker, Sharonda Thompson, and Achilles Kerbison.
Tequila Rucker, President of the United Education Association. Thank you all for just this opportunity, just to work with you all and with Superintendent Hobson throughout his term. As a newly elected leader of UEA, it was our goal to establish a positive collaborative relationship with the district and the local union. Superintendent Hobson, I would like to thank you for making the process of this relationship less contentious. It really could have been worse than it was. We know at times, we didn't always see eye to eye or agree with things, but because we had a mutual respect for moving the district forward, we were able to work through our issues. And that's why on tonight, we would like to recognize you as a collaborative leader for the Shepherd County School District.
We're not taking your time.
I'll pick up with Ms. Rucker and Sharonda Thompson, 133 North Oak Grove Road, 38120. And in a thankless profession, we just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you Superintendent Hobson. As we present the token of appreciation for the collaborative efforts of him, we moved from the Ask a Teacher campaign to reclaiming teachers' time with eliminating the redundancy of lesson plans, to having various opportunities to have a seat at the table with our teachers and our paraprofessionals to have that seat. And we are just grateful for that collaboration, but there is still so much work to be done. So as I stand before our Commissioners tonight, all of you all that had a hand in selecting Superintendent Hobson, Commissioner Love, Avant, that was there before, thank you all for looking within our district and taking a leap of faith on a homegrown professional who was cultivated by educators that had talents within our district and had a pulse on the culture of the communities in our district. And I thank you all for that. We would like to implore this body to continue to move us forward with the collaborative work that we have been able to accomplish in the various departments, to choose within our own local talent pool of qualified individuals to continue to move the district forward. It is our belief that even when you compare resume to resume, you will find that the most qualified candidate may be among you right now. So you will be remiss to believe that going outside would not have a pernicious influence on the collaborative progressive culture and trust that we have started to form thus far. And so we still continue to ask you all to look within. Thank you all, and thank you Superintendent Hobson for the years of serving.
It's time for the stars yet. My name is Achilles Kerbison, 163 North Hollywood, 38112. I'm new to the city and I have a 14-year-old daughter. So I'm new to the city, but also to the school system. And I had a little concern with the schools with, some of the schools that were very, very faintly filled. They, you know, they were schools that are pretty big schools with just a few students. I didn't understand that because they have very little inside the schools. I don't know the names of them, but I was just hoping that we could consolidate some of these schools and get rid of some of these schools, you know, when they, they go by per student for how much they get funding into the schools. And so when you only have, you know, a few students, you have very little funding and it looks like a little ghost town over there. So it took me a little while before I actually placed my daughter into one of these schools until I could find something that's suitable. Thank you all.
Next speakers would be Eddie Jones, Abby Martin, and Notoria, Victoria Carpenter. Commissioner Jones, thank you for coming by tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So Eddie Jones, 160 North Main, 38103. Just thought I'd give you all my address. So to this illustrious body and to our soon-to-be Superintendent Emeritus, Dorsey Hobson. Sir, thank you for your service, but I'm here this evening standing before you on behalf of City University. We went over the data. We looked at the data. This was a 10-year process. Four of those years in that process, those numbers couldn't even be counted, but you guys are gonna have to go by those 10 years because that's what's in the statute. However, I ask that you consider what this would truly mean. If we decide that we're gonna use numbers that the state said are not good numbers and that we should not be using them, and some that you can't even use, that if we set a precedence of using those numbers, I believe we open up a precedence for all of our schools that may have those numbers. And so if we're gonna do things across the board with transparency, I would ask that we would do that. But I stand before you as one of your strongest supporters and I ask that you do not close City University. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Notoria Carpenter, 2100 Curry. I'm here tonight for an ask from the board. When in your choosing of the next superintendent, I ask that you have parents at the table around the conversation when you're choosing our next superintendent. I also want to thank Dorsey Hobson tonight for being willing to sit down at the table and listen to parents. We didn't agree all the time, but you listened. So I thank you. So that's why it's very transparent that in the next process of choosing our superintendent, that parents' voices are at the table. Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Are you Ms. Martin?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Abby Martin and I'm a first-grade teacher. I live at 99 North Main Street Apartment 1901 38103. And I'm also a member of the group called 901. The mission of 901 is to raise awareness of educational issues that affect the residents of Memphis and empower community members to organize for equitable solutions. We are currently working on research, research actions around career and college readiness for immigrants, refugees, and undocumented students. We believe that it is important for report cards to be translated into home languages. Whether it be when I am translating for families of my students currently that I teach, or as growing up in a bilingual family who was involved in my education, I felt the onus of responsibility to explain to parents grades and expectations at school. While growing up, I felt shame and embarrassment over the language barrier and was able to hide and be dishonest about things at school. During parent-teacher conferences currently, instead of focusing on a plan on how to better support a student, I have to spend much of the precious time explaining grades and scores in another language. This burden tends to fall on students if a teacher is not bilingual, which should not be the case, while there are, while there are currently access to programs that are not being utilized and to assist schools in translating report cards. Thank you so much for your time.
I'll call the next four speakers. Sheree Marie Hicks, Ted Cockford, Norma Arbora, and Juliana Flores.
Good evening, board members. My name is Sheree Marie Hicks. My address is 3488 West Metropolitan Circle. I'm here with my concern about the school closing. I believe that any school charter or traditional should be closed if they're not providing our students with quality education. I just feel that we should be able to include all the parties involved with the school closing, like the parents and the children, the teachers, you know, let them know in a timely manner where they can have a, just a transition that's not emotional and, you know, just like a shock when it happens. I also feel that every child should be able to be guaranteed a seat when that school closes in another rewarding school. I also would like to, for the district, to hold community conversations with every neighborhood about the school closing. Thank you for your time.
Ted Cockroft is the next speaker.
My name is Ted Cockroft. My address is 4481 Stony Point Drive. Previously, I stood before you in advocacy for City University schools. And once again, I stand before you all with the request that you would readjudicate your decision to close this institution of education. However, in light of this pending decision and all the other organizations here today, I stand in empathy and solidarity because we all are here as a conglomerate. We all have requests. They may seem like clamoring or tirades or rants, but all of us are in dire need of resources, more opportunities to ensure success. And that success is contingent on your judgment and that success is also contingent on our participation with your decisions. So in other words, we need each other for survival. So once again, consider the ramifications of foreclosure, but also consider the ramifications of the other decisions being made that affect these other people behind me. Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, Ms. Arbana and Mr. Flores.
My name is Juliana Flores and I come representing the Latino community. Everybody Hispanic, get up, please. We have come here and gathered to talk about the Mexican consulate which comes here, which helps us and benefits the Latino community a lot. Not just one or two, but thousands of people, it helps a lot. I come myself as a, as a witness of it since I would be considered, I guess, a dreamer. I did not, you know, get the so-called deferred action or whatever that happened because I did not fight for that. I fought for the Dream Act. I was an activist back when I was in high school. But we, I'm here standing before you, telling you that it actually helps people a lot because since I wasn't born here in the States, I have to get all sorts of documents from Mexico just to get an identification. I get pulled over by the police and next thing you know, I'm in jail just because I don't have an identification. So it helped me be able to do that, get an ID, to not get arrested, all sorts of things. And but first and foremost, it helped me get married. Thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you to all our public comments. Was there anyone? I'm sorry, sir, did you not, were you not able to sign up for the list to speak tonight? Feel free.
Thank you so much for this opportunity. I'm talking on behalf of Family and Community Engagement and also the ESL Department. I am presenting to the community, actually, the Families Connect Program. This is a parent engagement program sponsored by both Family and Community Engagement and the ESL Department. And this is a program in which what we do is we are providing parent engagement training that is designed for the Hispanic families. Basically, what we do there is we help those families know how to navigate the American system, the American education system, basically. The ways we do that is by helping parents know what resources they have available within Shelby County Schools, to be more specific, but this has been designed for all over the nation, for all over the United States. And also what we want is to help kids have more comprehensive support by means of that training that we provide to parents. Also, and as last but not least, we want to help the parents be more knowledgeable of the resources and the organic ground within Shelby County Schools. Thank you so much.
Thank you. We're now on the question of the approval of the minutes. And this will be the approval of the October 30th business meeting, approval of the minutes of the November 13th, 2018 special call meeting, and the approval of the minutes of the November 27th, 2018 work session meeting. Can I get a motion? A motion by Ms. Love, can I get a second?
Okay.
Second by Ms. Jones. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, if we could get a roll call vote.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Oral?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
We have an approval of the minutes. We're now moving on to the board chair's report. I want to thank the Office of Family and Community Engagement for the family showcase that was, for our school showcase that was hosted this past weekend. It was wonderful to hear about how many parents, families that came out. I want to thank Ms. Dr. Ray and Ms. Lori Phillips for their hard work and endeavoring to making sure that all of our parents and students have an opportunity to review all of the schools that they may have and we have for choice. I'd also like to take a moment of personal privilege to just say from the bottom of my heart, I would like to thank board members and district staff for every text, phone call, and visit during our family's time of grief. It meant, it meant a lot to our family. It meant a lot to our family to have your support during our time of grief. And I would like to especially thank Superintendent Hobson and, uh, Vice Chair Love and Board Member Woods who checked in on me every day. It helped to keep me uplifted. The Academic Performance Committee report.
Thank you, Chair. Um, although Chair Avant just mentioned the nine oh one school showcase, I just wanted to take a point of privilege because it actually came out of the Academic Performance Committee, and I have been pushing the Academic Operations and Face Team and Communications probably for the past three years to make this happen. So, I am beyond pleased that we actually had such an outstanding event on Saturday. We had over six thousand people to walk through the Agri Center to see what choices were available in Shelby County Schools. So, to Dr. Ray, Dr. Whitelaw, Dr. Burp, Dr. Phillips, thank you very much, Ms. Powers and Communication, just the whole team for just making sure that that, uh, was possible. And a special shout out to actually our security team because parking was quite a bit of a quandary there, and our security team made sure that they figured it out for parents. Um, the rest of, uh, regarding the report for Academic Performance Committee is that we discussed charter school renewals. We also discussed the Promise Academy and Circles of Success, Circles of Success, uh, opportunity for facilities, leadership grant, which is actually on the agenda for today, and as well as today, we held a charter grievance meeting, and that is actually on the agenda for day, today as well. Thank you.
Audit Budget Finance Committee report.
Yes, um, we had a meeting in November. Uh, at that meeting was primarily to, uh, to start setting the stage for, uh, our budget planning process for the upcoming year, but also to give an update on where we were on a number of issues, particularly, uh, related to, uh, the County Commission on, uh, on capital, uh, on some of our capital projects and investments surrounding that. Um, if I may, Landon, you have any updates from yesterday's meeting? I know we're only giving update from our committee report, but it may, it may be timely to discuss that as well. Madam Chair?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, Board Member Woods. Um, Chief Allen and I, we've met with Commissioner Whaley and, um, Chief Richards as well. They're CFO. We got to a point of agreement in terms of the, the thirteen million dollars, um, capital budget amendment. We will be taking that forth on December twelfth. Um, both Beth and I will be there to give the County Commission an update in terms of our capital progress, um, and to answer any further questions that they have around that budget amendment.
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. Johnson. And Madam Chair, uh, while that was the, the premise of our, um, committee meeting, uh, I, I did, uh, indicate to Mr. Johnson that, uh, that any, uh, new information that's disclosed, uh, prior to briefing the County Commission, that that information also be shared to the board, uh, related to capital, uh, to our capital needs assessment. So, uh, thanks, thanks again to the both of you. And Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Capital Needs and Facilities Committee report, Mr. Orville. Community Outreach and Engagement Report, Miss Vice Chair Love.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I do want to thank, uh, the listening public and all of those involved who participated in the open, uh, Operation Warm Hearts event on last Tuesday. Uh, the coats and different, uh, clothing provided will be, uh, is a great need for our students in the district. I also want to inform, uh, fellow board members that for our January meeting, for our Community Engagement meeting, we will discuss our equity audit, and we will, will begin to outline the process and the next steps regarding the formal organization, uh, that will conduct the audit. And I know that Board Chair Avant, she spoke about the School Choice Fair, but I do want to personally thank each and every department that played a part in the School Choice Fair. That was a wonderful event, and if the public missed it, you missed, um, a great event. We had all schools, charter schools in one building. Um, schools were able to showcase their work. Uh, we had performances from schools. They had free food, uh, a selfie booth. It was just, it was wonderful. Uh, we actually gave awards to some of our schools for their, uh, for their, uh, setup, and it was, it was wonderful. So, I did tell the superintendent, um, that it was wonderful, and I know my compliments are far
You also said no complaints.
No complaints. I did.
Say it again.
Yes, 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 yes. Yeah, so, uh, to everyone who played a part in it, whether, uh, it was a big part or a small part, uh, on behalf of myself, I truly thank you, and I'm looking forward to this event next year.
Moving on to Evaluation Committee report, Mr. McCormick.
No report.
Uh, Internal Board Operations Committee report, Ms. McKissick.
No report, but I would like to echo my fellow colleagues in saying that the nine oh one showcase was simply outstanding, and I was, uh, overjoyed to be a part of it. Thank you.
Legislative Advocacy Committee report, Ms. Love.
Yes, I would like to let the board members and also the listening audience know that on December the seventeenth at, uh, one thirty-five, we will have, um, I'm sorry, the Shelby County De- delegation will hold their annual, annual legislative meeting where I will be presenting, uh, our legislative agenda and, uh, answering questions, uh, that the Shelby County delegation has. So, that will be December the seventeenth, uh, beginning at one thirty-five, and it will be at the Pink Palace Museum. Thank you.
Procurement Committee report, Ms. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think, uh, the one item I had from September, we already, uh, dealt with and added to the consent agenda, so.
Yes. No, to the, um, it's a, an action item.
No, you told me I could do it at the time when we had to approve the agenda, so I did.
This-
You told me I could do it at the time we did the agenda, so I did.
It still hasn't been presented yet. It is on the agenda, and you can take care of it right now if you want.
Oh, okay. So, on behalf of the Procurement Committee meeting, I move to award the short-term, a long-term disability to UNUM. That was the recommendation from the, uh, September, uh, Procurement Committee meeting. I think it's on the agenda, so that was, um, I think the recommendation of the committee, but it will require the board to either vote it up or down. I thought it was on the consent agenda, but it's not.
On the action agenda.
On, on the action item, so it will require a vote by the board, and I'd ask for a vote either up or down on that recommendation.
Uh, Superintendent Hobson.
I just want to reiterate to the board that there is no, um, I just want to reiterate to the board that there is no recommended action from the administration on this, and I think that state law is very clear that the board acts on recommendation by the superintendent. And I know there was some discussion at the last meeting about a procurement committee recommendation. Well, we went through, I think, all twenty-nine pages of the transcript, and first of all, there wasn't a quorum at the procure, the procurement meeting. And secondly, there was no recommendation from the, from the procurement committee. And even if there was a recommendation, which there was not, there's still no active recommendation from the, the administration to do anything. As I stated during the last meeting, there are a lot of issues with the selection of a short-term disability provider. Uh, we think it's in the district's best interest to, A, just allow employees to pick who they want to pick, and then, secondly, as, as we move towards collaborative conferencing, this is certainly an issue we think that teachers should be able to, uh, weigh in on. But just to be abundantly clear, there is no recommendation from the administration for either of these, uh, people who responded, and we don't think there's any basis in state law for the board to unilaterally make a recommendation to perform an administrative function. So, for that reason, we're going to ask the board to just follow state law.
So, I think that we are in a position now where this is not state law. This is a recommendation from the committee. It's policy. I do agree that initially, policy did not require the board to weigh in on this. Superintendent on his own volition, put this before this board, put this before the committee, and, uh, we went through months of painstaking back and forth to try to come up with the best option. Uh, we did so. Uh, it wasn't, it, I thought it was a quorum, but I'm told there were four members there, but there were members of the, uh, administration, uh, there, uh, in particular, Chief Small, who at that time agreed, and after that committee meeting, uh, to evidence the agreement, did send a letter of, uh, intent to award to UNUM. Now, uh, I understand that that is not the position now, but at the time, we had the committee meeting, at the time everything took place, at the time the board, uh, members who were there, and I'm not saying there was a quorum, that's why it has to be, uh, voted on by this board up or down. Uh, this board ultimately, we're not dealing with a matter of state law. We're dealing a matter of procedure from a item that comes from a committee. This clearly, uh, was presented through a committee process. Uh, and your, Superintendent admitted last week that maybe you all, uh, would rethink how you handle these matters in, in the future in terms of, uh, allowing the board's input, but that doesn't negate what's happened with this, uh, particular item. So, it's on the floor, it's not state law, it's procedure in terms of board policy. Policies can be waived, altered, uh, suspended, or whatever, uh, but it's coming from the board committee. It's clear, the policy is clear when a item comes out of the committee, and the board has every right to vote it up or down, and that's where we are.
Respectfully, Ms. Jones, it did not come out of committee because there was not a quorum and there was not a recommendation for the committee. But it, before you get to that, under Tennessee law, the board acts on recommendations of the superintendent. There, there would be like the board just said, hey, we'll just spend five million dollars to build a park tomorrow. You can't just put, you can't bring things for the body to, uh, vote on unless it comes from recommendation of a superintendent. And I also think it's just troubling the fact that part of the reason why we don't have a recommendation is because the short-term disability provider was going to give the less expensive rate to employees. We're not selecting them. And there are other issues around bid protests and all that, and it just puts the board and the district in jeopardy, and so therefore we do not have a recommendation. And so, I'd ask counsel, I guess, Mr. Morris, uh, Ms. Urban, I guess, if the board says, I guess they can direct the staff to do something. I mean, is that a, what's the legal position there is, I guess what I'm saying. Like, there's no item before the board that the administration is making a recommendation on, so how can the board unilaterally recommend or direct the administration to do something it thinks is not in the best interest of the district of employees? Okay, could we get some clarity on that?
So, I'd like Mr. Morris and Ms. Urban to weigh in, but I do, just for the record, um, parliamentarian has directed that because we didn't have a quorum, we will, we'll have to vote on this as an action item rather than a committee. Ms. Urban.
Sure, thank you, Superintendent and Chair Avant. Um, at the request of several board members last week, a transcript, uh, was, uh, requested to be made of the Procurement Committee meeting from September eighteenth, twenty eighteen. We provided that transcript. Um, our office listened to the, um, the audio and actually referred the transcribing of the audio to a third-party independent group to make sure that it was transcribed, uh, as best as possible. And from that transcript, there's no indication that, uh, a recommendation or any board action was recommended in that meeting. Um, and so, for today, there was, there was no, there was no, um, vote, there was no resolution, there was not, there wasn't any board action taken at the committee meeting. The only thing that was discussed in that meeting was the results of the bid protest. And so, to take it further, um, you know, to echo the sentiments of the, uh, superintendent concerning state law, the board acts on the recommendation of the superintendent, um, and that is also in line with key, with good practices of, uh, our procurement laws.
Uh, Ms. Jones, would you like, uh, Mr. Morris to speak before you? Mr. Morris?
Good evening. Um, I've looked at the, uh, the issue of a, uh, a vote, uh, by the board, and it has been my view that, um, the matter is, uh, something that the board, can vote on if it has the votes. Uh, it, it, it seems to me, the question regarding the, the committee meeting is not that significant in light of the fact that it was on the agenda as a discussion item. It was, uh, questionable whether or not there was a quorum, you can't tell that from looking at the minutes, that, uh, it, uh, leaves the matter pretty much where it was. It was discussed and considered by the committee, and then what happens? Well, presumably, the committee at some point reports that it's had the discussion, and the question is, uh, can the board, uh, take it up? Uh, looking at the policies, the policies of the board suggest to me that a, a motion by a member of the board, uh, to add the item, uh, can be considered by the board, whether or not it will hear that motion, and the board can vote that it will or that it won't. Uh, I have not looked at whether or not it is, uh, prohibited for the board to consider a matter that is, uh, not presented to it by the superintendent. I'll be happy to do that, uh, at, uh, a point beyond this date, but I'm not prepared to comment on that at this time.
Ms. Jones.
I just, uh, you know, I guess we have a duel, as often happens in these type of situations. I'd just like to respond to something that, uh, Counsel Urban indicated, that there was no discussion. There was, there, I was sitting there. I remember the exact words of Chief Small, who used to say, I guess the choice is UNUM. And to really solidify, that was what came out of that meeting. Procurement immediately after that meeting sent a letter of intent to award. So, uh, that didn't just fall out of the air, but, well, I mean, we can go back and forth. Um, I'm asking that the matter be voted up or down.
So, if I could just ask counsel, I mean, so, if the board decides to buy a spaceship and says, we want to put that on the agenda with no discussion, you know, no, no, no recommendation from the administration, so the board, if, under that approach, notwithstanding the well-established body of law, NTCA, the government's education, superintendents, and boards, can just put anything on the agenda, or not even on the agenda, can just vote on anything at all times? That's my first question. My second question is, having clearly established that there is not a recommendation from the administration ostensibly because it costs employees more, but having established that, if the board says, do it, is that a directive from the board to, to, I'm trying to understand what the legal impact of a unilateral directive to the administration to do something that the administration doesn't think is in the best interest of the district?
Thank you, Superintendent. Um, again, um, to reiterate, state law is clear about the relationship between the superintendent making a recommendation and the board acting on that recommendation. I'd also in, you know, just broaden that position, uh, with respect to the purpose and intent of procurement laws. Um, that, um, you, I would strongly caution the board, um, against unilaterally making procurement-related decisions, uh, without the appropriate vetting that is already outlined in state law.
Ms. Jones.
Point of clarification, does the administration get two, just like the board members get two?
I'm sorry?
Does everybody get two, two opportunities? Because this could go on all night.
It, it could.
So, uh, point of clarification. So, General Counsel has had two, Superintendent's had two, and I think I've had two. So, we end up at two.
So, I think at this point, um, the matter could, according-
If, if, if I might, there, there, there might be a, a third, uh, option, and, uh, that might be, uh, to, uh, uh, hold this matter and allow me an opportunity to look at that specific question, whether or not state law would prohibit the board from acting absent a superintendent's recommendation. Um, and which time I'd be, uh, uh, more prepared to give you at least my definitive view on that question, and then, uh, the board can do as it, as it chooses.
So.
So, I, I, let me let Ms. Love speak, and then we can go to your, to your action.
It's just a question. Um, Superintendent, you said it last week that you were having conversations with both, um, both insurance companies. Can you either tell us how that went or send us something in email?
I will. I think that the, the law and the short- I think that the law and its short over is they both said they didn't want to do the rates that they had quoted if they had to, if they didn't have exclusivity, yeah.
So Ms. Jones, I guess the matter is, would you like to hold this matter over so that Mr. Morris can then give an opinion on this matter, or would you still like to make it as an action item?
I don't know if that's my unilateral decision to make, whether to hold it over. I guess that would be...
But we'd have to go to a vote of two-thirds of the board, whether or not to add it to the agenda, I think at this point if...
I think, I thought, so if it's the board's desire to allow, I certainly don't have a problem with that, allowing Mr. Morris some time to look into this particular question. You know, I was at the meeting, I know what was said, I know what was said by who, there were other four board members there who heard that, and now it really concerns me to hear general counsel state that it wasn't said. But I don't have any problem with Mr. Morris taking the time, and if we put it on our next regular meeting.
For discussion.
Move it on, if we could move this item as an action item forward to our next regular scheduled meeting, that should give him some time to look into that particular legal question.
So I think Mr. Morris could look into the question, but I think it would be an action of the board whether or not to add it to the agenda for next meeting.
So I thought it was added tonight.
So because there wasn't...
I thought it was added by, I said by consent.
Yeah, so parliamentarian said since we did not have a quorum at the meeting stated by the transcript, that we had to at least have a two-thirds vote in order to add it to the agenda.
Okay, okay. So if we're delaying something that's not on the agenda, to what, at what, to what point in time?
The only way this can come from the committee is by committee vote at a quorum meeting.
Okay.
I don't know one way or the other, it has been said that it was an inquiry meeting. Therefore, nothing could come out of it, it cannot be a motion from the committee. However, it could be an individual motion from you. If you would like to do that, to add something to the agenda requires a two-thirds vote or general consent.
Well, I think that the question of the legality of, that Mr. Morris talked about is worth exploring, and I think board members would want the answer to that, and certainly I would want the answer to that before we were asked to vote. My only concern was, I guess we can reconvene another procurement committee meeting to, once we get the answer to that particular question, and then we can see, and then maybe we can have accurate records of what happens in that meeting, and then we can see what comes of that.
Okay. So Mr. Morris will look for an answer from you, if you could send that information out to the board. All right, we're going to move on to Superintendent Hobson's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Board Member. Just very briefly, I want to thank so many people who have given me so many well wishes and wish me well and send a lot of love, and I think about, I think I had my first board meeting here in June 14, 2008 in this very room, and I know it's a special day because in 10-plus years, I don't think my mom has come to one board meeting, and I see my mom, I see my mom, I think, so mom, mom, will you put your hand up in there? So I want to thank her for instilling a strong love of God in my heart. I also want to thank her for still encouraging me, good discernment, and temperament. I have the temperament of my mom, you needed this temperament to have this job. I also want to thank so many people, including the teachers, heard from the teachers' organization today, thank you, Sharonda, Tequila, love you guys. I know, as you've said a bunch of times, Keith, I saw Keith come in here. We haven't always agreed, but we've always been able to rally around each other behind these kids in what's in the best interest of this district. And at the end of the day, teachers are the lifeblood of the Shelby County schools. That's, if I've, if I've learned anything, I've learned that, and we have to make sure we continue to push our teachers, but then compensate our teachers, reward our teachers, give our teachers strong career paths, and make sure that we keep them happy so they can keep on this great work that we've been doing. Also want to thank, you know, we've worked with so many elected bodies, I see Commissioner Jones, who is a strong advocate and friend, I see Commissioner Ford out there, and we've developed a lot of great relationships over the years, and I appreciate you all's support for this school district, and I know that you all will continue to support this school district because we've come a long way, our needs are great, but with champions like you guys, I know we'll be, continue to soar. I want to thank our parent groups, you know, I think I heard from Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Everett, you know, again, we haven't always agreed on everything, but we've always been able to rally around kids, and most importantly, I want to thank the school board. I think that you guys have shown tremendous courage and tremendous leadership, even when it's been difficult. I think about school closures, I think about just a host of things that, you know, oftentimes aren't fun and popular, but you guys have done what's right all the time. I want to thank, last but not least, certainly, my staff, you know, you guys, we've been going, running hard for a long time, and I could go on and on and on, but special, 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 special shout-out to Brian Stockton, who is one of my best friends in life, who came from DC at a really difficult time, helped me and probably extended my shelf life by about a year and a half, so I appreciate you, I appreciate everybody, I just appreciate this community, and I know that I've gotten a lot of calls and people concerned about what's going to happen next, and I'd say two things, first of all, it's in God's hands, and that's all you really need, and secondly, it's in this great school board's hands, and I know they're going to be very thoughtful about passing the leadership torch, whether it's an interim person, and then ultimately the permanent person here. So we're, you know, we've left it a whole lot better than we found it, you know, we've got a lot of, a lot of good things going, and I'm sure that as dad-in-chief and private citizen, I'm looking forward to great things to come, and if I don't like it, I'm going to come out there, I'm going to sign up to speak. And that's going to be very, very fun. Appreciate you guys so much, so excited about my board member, Ms. McKissick, my board member, Ms. Coleman, I say my board member because I'm in her district, and I think that this is the best board that I've been a part of or been around in Memphis and Shelby County in 10 years, and I'm very proud of the leadership, I'm very happy for the direction this board is going to take, and just look forward to being a SES cheerleader. Thank you so much.
The superintendent's remarks kind of precursed our presentation, but we're going to get to that in just a moment, because this board does want to recognize his commitment and leadership to this district. On general counsel's report?
No report.
Okay, all right, so tonight we do want to recognize, do a special recognition, it would be remiss of this board not to take time, do the proclamation first, for this board not to take time to recognize the superintendent. I would like to thank board members, I would like to thank, a heartfelt thanks to Superintendent Hobson for his commitment to this district and the Memphis community. Without a doubt, he has been an exemplary leader to this district and is always working on behalf of students. I know it has not always been easy to do this job, but I don't think that we as a district could have come out of a merger and demerger without your leadership. So on behalf of myself and other board members who probably have something to say, we'll make a special presentation of a proclamation to the superintendent. And you all have to be patient, because it's a pretty long proclamation, it took two pages. Whereas Dorsey Hobson II has served as the first superintendent of the Unified Shelby County School District, fearlessly leading a newly consolidated district through an era of vast changes and uncharted frontiers. And whereas Dorsey E. Hobson II, during his tenure as General Counsel of Memphis City Schools, was instrumental in facilitating the largest public school district merger in U.S. history between Memphis City Schools and Shelby County Schools. And whereas Dorsey E. Hobson has been an active leader in the Memphis community for many years, has worked with school districts across the country, as well as grassroots group, nonprofit organization, governmental organizations and corporations. And whereas Dorsey E. Hobson has, the second, has developed relationships with students, principals, parent groups, and faith-based community throughout Memphis and Shelby County. And whereas, as a passionate advocate for education and equity, Dorsey E. Hobson II has promoted education for all students regardless of race, national origin, or socioeconomic status. And whereas Dorsey E. Hobson II continues to positively impact the lives of Memphians each day, providing an example of wisdom, discipline, service, and ingenuity. And whereas Dorsey E. Hobson II developed the Destination 2025, a 10-year strategic plan for Shelby County Schools, which will strengthen early literacy, improve post-secondary readiness, develop teachers, leaders, and central office staff, expand high-quality school options, and mobilize family and community partners. Whereas Dorsey E. Hobson II has constantly worked to provide learning opportunities for students by working with parents and community partners to achieve student success, in addition to creating new initiatives for student achievement, including the Superintendent's Summer Learning Academy. And whereas Dorsey E. Hobson II's leadership, Shelby County Schools has stabilized finances and balanced the district's budget by allocating funds where necessary and alleviating extraneous spending. And whereas Dorsey E. Hobson II has created professional development programs for teachers, administrators, and Shelby County employees. Whereas Dorsey E. Hobson II has received regional and national recognition for his leadership of Shelby County Schools from several organizations, including the Council of Great City Schools, Discovery Education, 100 Black Men, the Watch Dogs Parent Organizations, Link Incorporated, and the National Urban League Center. And whereas Dorsey E. Hobson II was a finalist for the Green Garner Award and the Premier Award for Urban School Leadership, and was recently named the Supervisor of West Tennessee. And whereas Dorsey E. Hobson II leaves an indelible impact on the students, teachers, administrators, and district employees of Shelby County Schools. And now therefore we proclaim that Shelby County Board of Education recognizes the dedication, compassion, and service of Mr. Dorsey Hobson II as Superintendent of the Unified Shelby County School District, and it is indebted to Mr. Hobson for his invaluable leadership. We furthermore proclaim that the Shelby County Board of Education congratulates Dorsey E. Hobson II on his accomplishments and offers its best wishes on his future endeavors. And it has been signed on Shelby, the 4th of December, 2018, by each and every board member. Ms. Love?
On behalf of the board, we would like to present this to you, this plaque, and I'll take pictures.
Yes, we're going to, board members could come out front, and we're going to take a picture of Mr. Hobson. On his last board meeting as a superintendent. Hobson.
I'd just like to say to one of the parents now in our district, are soon to be in the next few weeks, Superintendent Hobson, thank you so much. Just in my short tenure, three months here on this board, you've been so instrumental in getting me acclimated and giving me access to all of your staff, and just having these wonderful one-on-one meetings just to help me find my way, and so I thank you so much as a parent of this district for the entire time that you've been with SES. It's just been a pleasure to be working with you. Thank you.
Mr. Orgle?
It's with a heavy heart that we say goodbye to you. I remember when you were, I was board chair, and you were our legal counsel. We had two legal counsel, we had two superintendents, we had two of everything, we were Noah's Ark of school boards, and you came in, Superintendent Atkins at the time, who was your good friend, still is, said he wanted to resign, and I think you were, when we had 23 people, there were 20 people there, if I remember, the vote was 19 to 1 to confirm you, and I don't think we've ever looked back. I don't remember, was that in 2012? And it's been a pleasure, I've never seen anybody learn on the job so quickly, because it would be like if we plucked Ms. Irvin out of the, just said, hey, we want you to be our superintendent, and that's basically what we did. And she would have done as equally as good a job if she was, yeah, so anyway. So I think you were our unexpected superintendent, but the last, it's really been the last seven and a half years that I've worked with you. It's been, it's been great, your advice, your wisdom. I can remember a time when it was very toxic around the merger, and that you pulled things out and set people straight, and I can think of one time, which I'll remind you of later, where we were on a phone call, and I can think of a heated moment that we had that wasn't between you and I, but you were in the room when we were discussing the merger. So I think Kevin and Theresa and I were the ones left from that board, and I know, speaking for me, I can't speak for them, it's been wonderful to work with you, and what's better about it is when you called me two weeks ago, three, four weeks, we've discussed this for a long time, just future and things like that, when you called me and told me that you were thinking about this, get my advice, I think you were asking my advice, you probably already made your decision, but I told you the best thing that's come out of it is that I've made a new friend, and I think we'll be good friends for a long time. We do a lot of things together, we've traveled together, we play golf together, and it's been, it's been just an awesome blessing for me to be your friend. And your mother, who I'd never met, you were hiding her from me, raised a great son, and you should be very proud of everything you've done, all your accomplishments, and I hope that if they're paying you more as, in your new job, in your new position, that your arms will get a little bit longer when it comes to going out to dinner. And so, yeah, so anyway, I love you, you're my buddy, and I'm going to miss seeing you in that seat.
Thank you, my friend.
Mr. Woods?
So I'll be brief, and Board Chair...
That goes for Robin too, by the way.
So Board Chair Avent, going down this role like this, I think you put folks on immense pressure to...
Come behind Billy.
To come behind Billy. So what I do know is that I won't say anything inappropriate about Ms. Irvin, so I'll just keep talking about Superintendent Hobson, is that, you know, as Billy indicated, Board Member Jones, myself, Billy, we've been here since the beginning, when we had to figure out who's going to be serving this leadership role, you've taken it by the horns, you've done a great job, and we appreciate your leadership, your friendship, and also appreciate your ability to take, you know, take the hits. We don't always agree, and that's not how it's supposed to be. So as, as your friend, as somebody who wishes you nothing but the best, I wish you great success, knowing the role you're going to be going into, I don't wish you too much success, but in all honesty, I think he gets the joke. And Billy said he plays golf with you, I've seen him play golf, he is a good golfer, he's not a good marathon runner, but, so hopefully he has some free time to increase his speed, so I won't have to come in first, he knows I'm lying, but Dorsey, we do wish you the best, my friend, we have enjoyed working with you, and I think the district is in a much better place than when we took on this work, so again, wish you the best.
Ms. Love?
I do want to thank you Superintendent Hobson for your service. I can say that I remember in March of 2014, you and Board Member Jones attended a Frazier Community Meeting, dealing with Westside Elementary, and what you... Um, and to Ms. Thompson, I wasn't on the board when the superintendent was selected. I may be one of the reasons why he's leaving.
No, no, don't let them say that about you.
Uh, but, you know, just all jokes. Uh, thank you Superintendent, because I can say, uh, under your leadership, we have done great things, uh, not just in District 3, but as a school district as a whole. Um, you know, don't change your number. Uh, you know, I'll still be calling you, we'll, we'll still connect, um, 'cause you still owe me a dinner. Uh, so I still want that. But, uh, thank you for your service, and I wish you much success.
Mr. McCormick?
I can't tell you what an honor it's been to work with you and, and get to know you. Uh, until these two were elected, I was one of the newer, uh, board members. Um, I didn't have anything to, to, I wasn't a part of selecting you, but I played a big role in your success, because, uh, I was serving on the council when the council made the decision that led to the charter, uh, revoking the charter for the city schools. And if I hadn't have provided that leadership on the council, you would not be where you are today. So, um, um, but it's been a pleasure to work with you. It's, uh, I, I have had the privilege of, um, being in charge or overseeing your evaluation. Um, and, uh, you know, over the years that we've done that, it's just been a, a steady growth. Uh, if, if you would hang out two or three years, you might get all five. But we under, we understand that, uh, uh, you have a, a direction now that you want to take, and I'll add to my, uh, fellow board members that, uh, we wish you the best, and I hope our friendship continues, um, at least in golf. Yeah?
I can't wait to get invited to this golf game. Ms. Jones?
Thank you Madam Chair. Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to also express, uh, the fact that we have been, contrary to what took place tonight, we, we've been able to work together, uh, for the betterment of the children in this district, and I'm proud of that. I wish you every success in your new, uh, career and your venture, uh, so I'm not interested in that golf, I play tennis. Come on out.
Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you Chair. Superintendent Hobson, I just gotta say thank you for your service. Um, as you, uh, my colleagues have been talking about you today, I think one of the things I can always say, and we've often said this together, around, we don't often see eye-to-eye on everything, but I do accept and appreciate the fact that you listen. And from that is why I think you made a good leader. I think one of the things, as we talk about why we are where we are today, is because of you listening, is because of the fact that you are open-minded when it's time for us to make push, and I just thank you for allowing us to, um, push, and then you stepping up to the plate. And don't always take those hits, you know, sometimes with a grain of salt, you took them, and sometimes the next day I would have to call you and say, "Are you okay?" 'Cause we, are we still okay? And I, and I appreciate that, because that's what leadership is. I wish you the best.
Ms. Col, Dorsey Coleman?
First time I ever used this button. Um, a year and a half ago, when I was sitting at that podium saying some unkind things to you, um, I, I always had respect for you, but that increased at that time, because you showed me the type of person that you are. You're concerned, and you're caring, and nothing else comes out of whoever we elect next, they're gonna have to be concerned and caring. You've set the benchmark very high for that standard, and I thank you. And I appreciate everything that you've done since I've been apart. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I'm not gonna cry again, don't worry. All right, we're gonna move now to, um,
Madam, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, just real quick, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the teacher representatives presented Superintendent Hobson with an award, uh, if, uh, what is it you, you normally say, Ms. Cole, with the point of what? Anyway, can they take a picture, Superintendent? Point of personal privilege?
Personal privilege, yes.
Okay, uh, uh, they would like to grab a picture. Uh, I think not only them, but any teacher, I guess it's your, uh, gift, so you should say who should be in the picture, but, uh, they wanted to get a photo also Superintendent. Because the media's here, you're normally still gonna run out of the meeting early, uh, just because, uh, the media's here. But, um, they better get it now.
we want to make sure to recognize them, um, so that they can also take a picture. So any teachers or past educators that want to come up and get a photo with Superintendent?
And, um, I, I know that many folks have questions about how the process will take place. We have added that item for a discussion of the agenda, um, which we'll try to get through pretty quickly. Discussion of the interim superintendent. All right, so, um, there was one item that was removed from the consent agenda, which was the strategic allocations. Um, are there any other items to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'm gonna read, uh, I need to get a motion, and then a second for the consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda?
Move.
A motion by Ms. McKissick, a second by Ms. Love. Um, seeing no questions, I'm gonna move, uh, I'm gonna read the consent agenda into the record. 12.2 Textbook Selection, um, 12.3 TTLA Aspiring Principal Grant Renewal in the amount of $269,901.24. 12.4 Grant Initiative Approaches to Literacy Stem in the Library for the Amount of $2,234,030. 12.5 Office of Justice Program Stop Violence Prevention in Mental Health in the Amount of $439,793. 12.6 Stop School Violence Threat Assessment Program in the Amount of $422,006. 12.7 Ten Ready End-of-Course Exams in calculation of student, uh, grades. 12.8 PC Computer Equipment and Related Services in the Amount of $4 million. 12.9 2018-2019 Miscellaneous Commercial Food Items in the Amount of $530,111.61. 12.10 2018-2019 Miscellaneous Supplies in the Amount of $168,451.80. 12.11 Ash Enterprises Craigman High School, uh, Planetarium Renovation in the Amount of $2,500. 12.12 Contract Amendment Central Nutrition Center Demolition in the Amount of $160,561. 12.13 A2H Incorporated Engineering Services in the Amount of $291,555. 12.14 HNA Engineering Services in the Amount of $199,000. 12.15 Simmons Incorporated, Incorporated HVAC Building Automation Control System in the Amount of $2 million. 12.6, 12.16 Request to Piggyback on City of Memphis Field Contract in the Amount of $4 million. 12.17 Cyber Technology Security in the Amount of $800,000. 12.18 Purchase of, of Additional Vehicles for Safety and Security Award to CNC Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram and Wilson County Motors in the Amount of $931,459.83. 12.19 National Filter Solutions Incorporated HVAC Filter Replacement Services in the Amount of $1,360,488. 12.12 System Integration Cameras and Licenses in the Amount of $1,824,290.60. 12.21 Motorola Two-Way Radios in the Amount of $216,079.50. 12.22 Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Budget Priorities. 12.23 First Quarter FY 2018-2019 Financial Statements. 12.24 November Budget Amendment. 12.25 Class Lobbying Fees Millsaps Go and Government in the Amount of $37,500. Um, and then now I just need a, um, roll call vote.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgle?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
The consent agenda is approved. Now we move to Request for Actions, 13.1 Charter Renewal Grant. Uh, Superintendent?
Thank you board members. I think we made, uh, the recommendations, uh, last week, and I believe there was a hearing today on the one, uh, non-renewal, uh, of the charter application.
And I think, uh, is this where we have asked to split, split the, uh, divide the vote? Uh, the City University?
Thank you Chair. So it's already on the agenda as split. We are voting on the renewal of the recommendations, and then we're voting separately on City University Boys Non-Renewal.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. So this is on tho, those, uh, I, those schools that are for the renewal?
Motion to approve.
Motion, motion by Kevin Woods, and then a second? Second by Ms. Love?
Just on the renewals.
Can I get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgle?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That item is approved. We're now on 13 point, I'm sorry, and I'm, and I'm gonna ask board members to help, um, clarify if this was an item that you asked to remove or had questions on in last week's meeting. This is 13.3, the Microsoft Office Education 365. I'm sorry, got it. I'm, I apologize. So this is now on the, uh, dividing of tho, the vote. This was for the, um, this is for the City University, and the recommendation, uh, Superintendent, if you give the recommendation from the administration, please?
Yeah, the recommendation is to, um, not renew, uh, the charter for 10 years.
This requires a motion and a second. This is a motion and a second for, um, the closure of City University.
Motion.
A motion by Mr. McCormick. There's a second by Mr. Orgle. Okay, are there any questions or comments? Ms. Bibbs?
So just a point of clarification, so that the media gets it the correct way. This is voting on the renewal or non-renewal of City University Boys Middle School.
Yes, and we're voting on the recommendation of the administration.
Okay.
Which is for the closure of City University. That was the, that is the motion before this.
The motion is for the closure, so if we say yes, we for it, and if we say no, we're not.
If you're saying aye, you're for the closure, if you're saying no, then you're for, you're not for the closure.
Technically, Madam Chair, it's the non-renewal, is the direct legal term, the non-renewal of the charter agreement.
Because the school would not immediately close, it would, uh, not open the following year.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Ms. McKissick?
I just would like to address, um, City University, the students especially. Um, anytime, this is very difficult, this is extremely difficult, uh, my first significant vote, I believe, uh, on this board, and I don't take it lightly, neither does anyone on this board, and, uh, no one ever wants to non-renew or close a school. Um, we all have the best interest of the students at heart, we really, really do, and present it with the information that we're presented with. Um, just keep all of that in mind, it's what we're working with here, certainly what I'm working with, I'm speaking for myself here, uh, for 10 years of data, um, and I heard the passionate pleas, so, uh, be mindful of that, it's, um, you know, whatever the decision, it's something that we all have wrestled with and mulled over.
Mr. Woods?
Superintendent, uh, assuming that this, uh, item, uh, the board votes to, uh, uphold the recommendation by the administration, uh, did we talk through what, uh, other middle schools that are in the area, and Madame Chair, you may speak this also, but, uh, what schools would, uh, are in the area that are higher-performing schools that could potentially be attended by these families?
In Whitehaven, um, John P. Freeman, um,
Amosia Walker.
Amosia Walker.
Can you speak a little bit more on like, a school like John P. Freeman, that's in the Whitehaven community, is that a, that's, that's a good school?
It is. And, Amosia, Amosia Walker.
And Havenview.
I think, I think, I think Amosia Walker has been a level-five school the last two or three years. Uh, they do it very well.
Thank you.
Ms. Coleman?
Um, to piggyback on what Mr. Woods, my question, are these kids not coming from all over to attend City University? I mean, are they just the neighborhood kids, or are they allowed to come from anywhere to attend this school?
They're allowed to come, open the road throughout the city.
Seeing no, Ms. Bibbs, do you have a?
Yeah, so my, thank you. I, I'm sorry, I turned it on, then I turned it off, I apologize. So, I know we're mentioning schools in the immediate area, but I think to Ms. Coleman's point, students are coming from all over, and I think the closest middle school, if you were trying to go by the closest where they would be routed to, would probably be Havenview, which, if we looked at their numbers in comparison, that's something to consider.
Seeing no other questions, can I get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick? Board Member Orgle?
Aye.
No.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
No.
Board Member Coleman?
No.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
You have se, you have six votes in the affirmative and three votes in the negative.
Our motion passes. We're now moving on to next item is Educational Resources Strategies, 13.2. Um, is, was there a question by a board member why this was on a, um, this was moved from consent? Was there a question on this particular item?
Well, I, I asked you about why all these parties, because the contract wasn't ready.
Okay, I'm sorry. All right, so, um, clarification, these con, these items are Okay, I'm sorry. Alright, so, um, clarification, these con- these items are on the agenda because the contracts were not ready at the time, uh, we, of the work session. And so each Board Members have to, um, make a motion to approve these particular items. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Love, a second by Mr. McCormick. Roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
I'm sorry.
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Coleman? Board Chair Avant? You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That motion passes. We're now moving on to thirteen point four, Microsoft Office. Thirteen point three. No, we've done that one.
I took a shower this morning.
Okay. Alright, let me just refresh so that we are on the right item. Okay, thirteen, okay, we're now at thirteen point, we've done Microsoft Office Education. We're now at thirteen point five Innovative Engineering Services. Yeah, we did that one. Who didn't? Okay. I'm sorry, thirteen point four, Microsoft Office Education three sixty-five. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Love. Can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. McCormick, Mr. McCormick. Uh, can I get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Pass.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
This motion passes. Uh, thirteen point six Allen and Hoshell Engineering Services. Can I get a motion and a second? Did I move some of them? I'm sorry, thirteen, I'm really trying to rush through. Thirteen point five Innovative Engineering Services. Okay. Innovative Engineering Services thirteen point five in the amount of two hundred and five thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Um, a move, uh, motion by Mr. McCormick, a second by Ms. Doris Coleman. Can I get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman? Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
This motion passes. Thirteen point six Allen and Hoshell Engineering Services in the amount of two hundred and five thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Can I get a motion and a second? Motion by Mr. McCormick, a second by Ms. Love. Can I get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That motion passes. Twelve, thirteen point seven Thompson Engineering Services in the amount of one hundred and thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. McCormick, a second by Ms. Love. Uh, can I get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love? Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That motion passes. Thirteen point eight State Systems Fire Alarm Systems Inspection Monitor and Test Service with the amount of one hundred and, sorry, eight hundred and three thousand dollars. Can I get a motion and a second? Motion by Mr. McCormick, second by Mr. Ms. McKissick. Can I get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That motion vote passes. And can I have, this is thirteen... Thirteen ten Raptor System in the amount of two hundred thousand. Can I get a, a motion and a second? Who did that one? We just did that one.
Madam Chair, if I could, while they're looking through that?
Okay, Raptor System, we're, we're on thirteen point ten. Raptor System in the amount of two hundred thousand.
Madam Chair.
Can I get a motion?
I'm making motion to approve.
A motion by Mr. Woods, second.
Not gonna ask questions.
Second by Ms. Love. Do you have a question, Mr. Woods?
Yes, Madam Chair, is there, I'm just confused. Is it, are these new items? I just wonder why they're on a consent agenda?
They're not on the consent agenda because they were contracts that were not complete by the work session.
Okay, understood. That's just, I mean, for clarity, I just think it's important.
Yeah, I, I did announce that before we got started.
Oh, I probably weren't paying attention.
Mm-hmm, you probably were not. Can I get a roll call vote?
I was right. I refreshed. He skipped him out.
For thirteen point ten Raptor System. We're gonna go back to thirteen point nine, which we did miss, and Mr. McCormick, to Mr. McCormick's point. Roll call vo- roll call vote.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
Okay, thank you. And we're now moving back. Thank you, Mr. McCormick. We want to make sure that, that we didn't overlook any items. Thirteen point nine Nichols Fire Alarm System Inspection Monitor and Test Service in, in the amount of nine hundred and sixty-six thousand. A motion by Mr. McCormick, second by Ms. Love. Can I get a roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
The motion passes. We're on thirteen point twelve Resolution Approving SCS Board Members Strategic allocations in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. The schools... And Ms... Can I get a motion and a second?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Love, second by Mr. McCormick. Ms. Love?
I would like to pull Hawkins Mill, Georgian Hills, and North Haven Elementary.
Okay. So those that are, she's pulling from her board allocations. Could you repeat again, Ms. Love?
Hawkins Mill, Georgian Hills Middle, and North Haven Elementary.
Okay, so those that are being approved for the record tonight are...
Scenic Hills. Woodstock Middle, Lucy Elementary. It says Tresman, Tresman High School. I think it's supposed to say Tresman CTC. Egypt Elementary, Raleigh Egypt High School, Bellino Optional, Westside Elementary.
And also Havenview Middle School, uh, and Bellevue Middle School. Can I get a roll call vote? Roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs?
Aye.
Board Member Coleman?
Aye.
Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
The motion passes. Thirteen point thirteen, two thousand eighteen, nineteen SBE Legislative Agenda. Ms. Love?
Motion.
Uh, motion, Mr.?
Motion by Ms. Love, a second by Mr. McCormick. You have a comment, Ms. Love?
Yes. So I would like to turn it over to, uh, General Counsel Urban. Uh, she has, uh, clarification and a correction to the legislative agenda.
Thank you Board Member Love. Uh, last week, um, there was some discussion particularly about item number nine on page eight of the legislative agenda concerning TEN Ready. Um, specifically the language called for the elimination of the use and reliance on TEN Ready. Um, the board, uh, took the liberty to clarify its position on TEN Ready and that clarifying, uh, language is, um, included in item number nine stating that, and I'm paraphrasing, that, uh, the, the board's position is that it's interested in alternative, uh, and/or additional methods of assessing student performance. Um, uh, to make sure that the, that the state is relying on, uh, a more reliable metric. That is correct. It's an amendment to last week's, um, legislative agenda specifically to page nine. So that has been uploaded.
We, since it was never before us, why do we need a motion to amend?
It was before us last week. They're making an amendment to what was before the body last week. Can I get a motion? Is, is there a motion to make an amendment?
It is. Motion.
Motion for Ms. Love, a second from Ms. Doris Coleman. Do we have to make, we're voting on, we'll make a...
We're voting only on the amendment.
Roll call vote?
Uh, uh, point of clarity, Madam Chair, I, I, I would like to continue to, continue to discuss this item before we finalize the language.
Okay.
And, uh, and then I just thought we needed to vote on the document itself since it's just approving our legislative agenda, which is a fluid item, which could always be updated. It never comes back before the board for a, for a vote. So I hope, I hope we're voting to give our legislative chair and our general counsel the ability to continue to legislate on this regardless of what issue changes. But I want to make sure that we also discuss in that item, uh, general counsel, after further conversations with you, is that we also allow for, uh, or ask the state for resources for, for adequate implementation of whatever, uh, whatever accountability system is in place. Because when we look at TEN Ready and we look at the challenges, much of it was around, uh, the implementation, not, maybe not necessarily the tool itself. So if it's more technology, if it's how they roll out the testing sequence, uh, but really just, uh, engaging, uh, school districts around what's the proper implementation process, uh, to make sure that we can do it, uh, with fidelity. And so whatever wordsmithing that needs, I intend to, uh, approve the legislative agenda based on the fact that you have the ability to get that language right before sending it to our lobbyists.
So, uh, at this point, do we, does this particular item need to be removed from the legislative agenda for more discussion? Is that your motion?
I just asked for...
Does, does a leg- does this particular item need to be adapted for the legislative agenda for tonight?
Um, yes, I believe, at the will of the Chair Committee, Committee Chair.
Okay, so I'm gonna start back, can I, let me start back around and then I'll come back to you. Ms. Jones?
So, so, I guess I want the language and I want to know what it specifically is wanted to say. I don't know whether we need to do that tonight or another time. I don't agree that we need to allow it to be changed afterward without coming back before this board, if that was what was said. So I would like the language. I don't, I don't know.
Point, point, uh, I respond, sorry, Madam Chair.
But, um, if we need to do it tonight, I guess we'll need to hammer it out.
Yeah.
Uh, but, um, I'm not objected to either way. But I do want to know what the language is.
Madam Chair, if I may, just, and I won't, I won't belabor the issue, but, uh, Madam Chair, uh, as prior Chair and Co-Chair of the Legislative Agenda, the legislative process is always a fluid process. We always get last minute recommendations from our lobbyists asking us to take a position on an item. Though it never comes back before this body to vote on it because we don't have another month to consider that item. It's, 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 what I'm saying is that we empower our superintendent, our general counsel, and our legislative chair to, to, uh, get the pulse of this administration, this, and this board, to be able to say, here's our position on an item. And to be clear, all I'm saying is add one word, which is, uh, to include language around, uh, resources for implementation, is all I'm saying. Uh, if everybody's comfortable with that, that we talk about resources for implementation.
Can you read that back into the record so that it's clear? Added with that information?
Just for clarification, the, the previous language stated, this, uh, the SCBE urges the Tennessee General Assembly to eliminate the TDOE's use and reliance on TEN Ready. The new language, uh, that is being proposed tonight, particularly at item nine in the agenda, will be the SCBE urges the Tennessee General Assembly to require the TDOE to use multiple and/or alternative methods of accountability beyond TEN Ready that more accurately and reliably assess students' understanding of course subjects and classroom performance. I can add, uh, at, uh, Board Member Woods's urging that the SCBE also urges the Tennessee Gen- General Assembly to provide for adequate, uh, funding and instructions for implementation of TEN Ready.
Okay, and, and Ms. Love?
Sorry. What I wanted to say is we actually have, um, one of our legislative agendas that addresses all unfunded mandates, whether it be assessments, um, RTI, or anything that the state, uh, requires us to do. We are asking for those requirements to be, uh, funded. And that's general restriction on unfunded mandates. It's the first, uh, agenda item. So we, we already have that in place. So you can add, you can add that word, um, but letting everybody know that we already have that in place. But please add that word as it relates to the TEN Ready assessment. Thank you.
Will do.
So we're ma- we're voting, this is a roll call vote on the amendment. We'll have to go back to the document, the other items on the legislative agenda. This is on the amendment. Roll call vote, please.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick? Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Coleman? Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
The amendment passes. We're now voting on the legislative agenda. Can I get a motion and a second? A motion by Mr. McCormick, a second by Ms. Love. Roll call vote, please.
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love? Board Member McCormick?
Aye.
Board Member Jones? Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Coleman? Board Chair Avant?
Aye.
You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That motion passes. Uh, thirteen point fourteen I W L E S HVAC. Can I get a motion and a second? Uh, a motion by Mr. McCormick, a second by Ms. Love. Roll call vote?
Board Member McKissick?
Aye.
Board Member Orgel?
Aye.
Board Member Woods?
Aye.
Board Member Love?
Aye.
Board Member McCormick? Board Member Jones?
Aye.
Board Member Bibbs? Board Member Coleman? Board Chair Avant? You have nine votes in the affirmative.
That motion passes. We're on... We're now on thirteen, what would be item thirteen point four, thirteen point one five, which would be the discussion on the interim superintendent. And so this matters, comes before the board in that, um, I would want to make sure that the public ha- has an opportunity to hear from Board Members, um, some of the interests they have in an interim superintendent. It is important that this body takes this particular item. Um, this is a very serious and, um, this is a very serious item that we now have before us. Um, it is really behooves this board in order for us to be able to make decisions now that our, Mr. Hobson is leaving, that, um, we need to name an interim. And I think it is important for Board Members to be able to give some input on what they're looking for in an interim superintendent. So that really is the purpose of the discussion. There will be additional meetings that will happen in January to kind of outline a more permanent situation for a superintendent. We will be making sure to involve community in this process. Um, I will be asking Board Members to help, to lead particular communities so that we get input from teachers. We get, uh, import, input from community, that we get input from the business community, and also from parents, um, just, and stakeholders. I think that's an important part of this process. So I would like to open the floor for Board Members to, to give some feedback about their, this process for, uh, naming an interim superintendent. Ms. Love?
Thank you Chair. Um, so when we talk about, um, well, for me, I know that, um, because of the time constraints, because our superintendent is leaving January the eighth. Um, you know, I feel that as a board, we should outline the qualifications that we want to see, um, in an interim superintendent. Um, I also feel that, uh, based on those... I also feel that based on those qualifications, we as a board select the interim superintendent, you know, for that. So for me, qualifications, I would like to see someone who understands the district financially, academically, and someone who also understands Memphis as a whole. So right now, those are some of the things that I would like to say.
Okay, board members, this is your opportunity. Ms. McKissick?
What I would be looking for is to continue the momentum that we have right now within SCS, and to stay the course of that. I think this is an opportunity for us not just to, just to maintain, but to continue to move forward and to be innovative in how we approach solutions to, you know, problems that we have that need to be worked on. So that's just where I stand. I just wanna make sure that we don't tread water, that we are continuing to move forward.
Mr. McCormick?
Thank you, Chair. I think it's important for us to outline the process of how we are going to identify the interim, and how we will vet the candidates. You know, I've heard a lot of names mentioned throughout the community, but you know, how do those names actually get before this body? Is it through nomination, or do we have an application process? I know, you know, I've been watching, like, the city council is trying to replace seats, and they have a process where they open it up for applications, and then they're vetted, and then they're given an opportunity, the candidates are given an opportunity to make a presentation. So there's a number of ways that it can be done, but I think we need to define that process. And I don't know the proper venue of how we put that together. But I think that's important. And we can also, as we're working on that, discuss, again, the process for the permanent.
So one point that I wanna make sure that board members are aware, that our superintendent is leaving on January eighth. And in light of that, I would urge this board to be proactive in how we make these decisions. My personal recommendation would be to make a nominee, that board members make nominations before this body for discussion, and then vote. But it is up to the, it's the will of this body to make those decisions, whether or not you would be interested in a candidate process, whether people will actually fill out applications to apply, or if board members are comfortable with a nomination process. And in light of the fact that our superintendent is, his last day is January eighth, I wanna make sure that board members know we would like some transition time between the new, the interim superintendent and our departing superintendent. I think that is important, that there's transition, so that there is awareness of everything that's going on within the district, so that cabinet members, along with the superintendent, could brief that person, whether it's an internal person or an external person, I think that is important. One point of clarity for me also is that I would prefer that we have someone who's not interested in the permanent position. I think it's important for us to have someone who is helping us to move the momentum forward, but not necessarily interested in the permanent position. That is just a personal clarification. But Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know that we have time to do a lot of the things that have been expressed because we are under the gun for a deadline to have someone in place. I do agree that I do not want us to be stagnant for the better part of a year. We do need to move forward and do the work that needs to be done for this district. I tend to agree with Board Chair Avant that I would find appealing a candidate who's not interested in the permanent position. I fear that we'll have challenges with a search. And I do support a search for the permanent position. And I feel that if we select among of someone who's on staff, then we run the risk of that being sent, that that's going to be the person and I need not apply. Of course, that may not happen, and it's just a guess. But I like, but I also like everyone having a level playing field. I do know, as Board Member McCormick stated, that I've been approached with names from the community about different individuals, many of them who are employed. So I wouldn't want to slight one over the other or give anyone any sense of advantage. And so to me, a good way to do that would be to have someone who's not interested in the position. But I also am comfortable with just nominations from board members. And because we don't have a lot of time to take applications and vet those and do due diligence with that. So that's where I am with it.
And I do wanna remind this body that, you know, as representatives of folks across this district, that I think that you're more than capable of being able to move this process forward. I think board members have had enough experience through other boards that they've been on, as well as your engagement within community, to be able to move the process forward. So again, I would urge folks to think about the time gap that we're, the timeframe we're under, and that our superintendent did clarify for me under his contract. He does have additional days after January eighth. Nine more days under his contract. But I do want board members to consider that it is important for that transition process. So, Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. So I just wanted to reiterate, I think, something that's already been said by you and Board Member Jones around time is of the essence. So I think I am comfortable with us being able to make nominations and vote from that standing part. I will say this from my personal point, from what I've been hearing from my constituents and people out in the community who've reached out in every way imaginable possible. The running theme seems to be that people want to see an educator, and I stand behind that. I think that's one of the main qualifications that I'm looking for as we move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Bibbs. Mr. Woods?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, first of all, thank you for giving us the space to talk through this. I think it's also, I'll wait till the parliamentarian's done. I think it's important to remind the public that this is our body, that we set the direction for this district. And while Superintendent Hobson have had great success, it is because, and it should often be done through the lenses of the vision that we set forth. It is the work that's happening in our classroom. It is the work that's happening by many of these folks that are sitting out here watching us deliberate. I think this decision will be done in a way that's timely, that gives Superintendent Hobson an opportunity to transition that individual. But we will continue to operate as a body to make sure that the public and our employees know that this district is in good hand because of us, the elected body, that will carry out that fiduciary responsibility. If an individual put his or her name in the hat, I will not pin that individual in to say what he or she can't do, can do in the future, because I don't know what the future holds. I can say, and through my lenses, I think the candidate may or may not should be interested in the permanent job, that he or she may help or hurt him or herself based on putting their name in the hat. But I'm simply stating that if one of the nine folks on this, in this body, has an individual that they think can do the work and carry out the board's vision, then bring that individual and allow us to place our vote. Because I will get behind that individual to make sure that work happens, much like we did with Superintendent Hobson and the great work that we were able to do over the last five years. So while I think it's important that we couch the conversation, the biggest thing we need to be sending is a message to the folks that we show, that we hope show up to work after that critical vote, to say, the work must continue. That the work must continue, that the county commission that we need to get in front of to ask to continue to support this, our resources needed, the teachers and principals that need us to make sure that we're supporting them, that will continue. And Superintendent Hobson, while we commend you of your work, I know you have faith in this board to continue to carry out that work. So I got great confidence that whatever recommendations come before this body are gonna be good recommendations, and we'll vote accordingly.
Ms. McKissick?
Just wanna echo that I too believe that we can, as a board, in light of the timeframe and the constraints of getting everything done before winter break, to also be mindful, when you mentioned about the shortness of time, and that's going into budget season with our county commission, that to have someone intimately aware of what's going on there. So that is something just that I know that is important, a factor to consider for our interim superintendent.
Ms. Love?
Okay.
The second time.
So, process. Process, we are discussing tonight the qualifications, correct? That we, as board members, would like to see in our interim superintendent. Process, we are going to schedule a date and time to name the interim superintendent.
Yes, and I would, I would prefer, board members would, I'm gonna ask the board office if there are dates next week that board members are available for us to make this vote, and if the board is comfortable with us making nominations from this body. And I think that we can move forward with having a decision made next week.
So, process, once the interim is selected, I know that Board Member Woods requested a department update from our superintendent, so that we can have something to pass on to the interim. So, can we start working on it now? Yeah, so...
Make sure that the interim gets up, yes, we're working on it. Just so soon as you tell me who I'm working with, we'll start the transition.
So, well, from what Board Member, can you, from what Board Member Woods stated, and I agree with, we really wanted a portfolio of what's going on in all departments, updates on all departments. So whoever we select as the interim, they will have a blueprint to continue the work, like several board members have already stated. I also believe that we need, as far as the board, we need an update on our litigation, anything pending. Before you leave, we as a board need that in our executive session so that we can make sure, going back to what Board Member Woods stated, that the work continues. So when we talk about process, that's one of the things I think we should include in the process.
Ms. Bibbs?
Thank you, Chair. So within that, one of the things, Superintendent, I would like to see, if you do some type of report, give us the positives and the negatives. I think it's best to have the whole picture to be able to move forward. I know it's very easy, definitely. And don't treat this as this is about a reflection of you. I think this is more so a reflection of where we are present date. We know you've done great work, so then let's be able to handle the things that we need to move forward and to continue that work.
So we'll make sure, Ms. Bibbs, I guess over the next five or six weeks, that it'll be part of our weekly cabinet, is people condensing down really for an easy version for the board and for the interim, to be able to work through that. And also just use a second as a plug, I know that Beth and her team have been working very hard. I know one of the things I said I wanted to make sure I did before I leave was to bring the footprint work to the board. And I think that we've scheduled a meeting for next Tuesday, and we're gonna present some significant food for thought for the board to consider for the next five years.
Just one other point, thank you, Chair. Just in that, Superintendent, just make sure you also include unfinished projects.
Okay, so I think, did you have another question, comment, Mr. McCormick?
I do have a question. So I go back to the process that we're gonna use to determine our timeline, our process. I was just kinda reading through the policy. I mean, we can, we can do it in a committee. I mean, we can do it fast, it doesn't have to be drug out. But, you know, we need to nail down and say, by this date, we're, you know, we're gonna accept nominations, or, you know, just the bullet points of what we're doing in this. So it's clear to the public?
Sure.
I mean, what if, is, are only nominations accepted by the board? I mean, just those questions.
So I think from the body, from most of the comments that have been made, that there, this board is comfortable with the nominations being made from this body. And so if, I wanna make sure...
What I'm saying is, I was just making, you know, examples so that, that's why we need to have it in written form of what this process is gonna be. I mean, I'm talking, you know, probably less than a page. I mean, but we need to have that in place.
I'm happy to draft something that board members can reflect on based on some of the comments that are made today. I'm happy to draft that and hopefully get some response and reflections from board members by the end of this week. Okay? Mr. Woods, is this your second or third time?
Yes, in final time. Madam Chair, what I believe you've articulated is that at a date certain, either through special call meeting or committee meeting, that you will convene this body to bring forth those nominations, and then a vote will take place with the recommendation of an interim superintendent. So as soon as that information is available, I'm assuming it will go through the board office and then be notified to the public. And we'll do much like we did about five years ago.
So, and I think it's important that whatever this board's reflections are, that we make sure that the public is aware of what those, our process is, the requirements and things that board members are looking for in an interim, and that there is keeping in mind that early part of next year, this board will have to convene outside of our work session and some of our other committee meetings, really just to make, to discuss this process for a permanent. That's gonna be part of our journey, that we've gotta make some decisions. And this board will have to convene in order for us to kinda move that process forward. If there are no other items before this board, this meeting is adjourned.